Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the June tenth twenty twenty five meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We will start with introducing the board and staff members present. I am Teresa Flynn.
Carlos Garcia.
Beth Cassavant.
Michelle Conlon.
Greg Richards.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to the Town Manager.
The first item on our agenda is to approve the bill's payrolls and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, I'm actually going to take separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty seventh twenty twenty five meeting?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to abstain as I was absent. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June third twenty twenty five workshop?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is announcements and reports. Board members, any announcements or reports?
Madam Chair, I do have one. I want to acknowledge that there are many in our community who are concerned and have fear in regards to the ongoing issues surrounding immigration and customs enforcement. Understandably, there are residents who have questions on what they can do if an incident were to occur. I want to share with the community that recently, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office released guidance for immigrants, families, and communities on ICE enforcement. This guide offers information on your rights when interacting with ICE, and I encourage residents to review this resource guide to learn more. They can find it on the Attorney General's website at mass.gov. Thank you.
Any other board members? I did want to note that we hold Select Board office hours on the second Tuesday of each month prior to our meeting from five thirty to six thirty in the conference room across from the Select Boardroom. And just remind people to take advantage of that if they would like. We had a few residents that attended this evening, so we thank them for their time. And Michelle, thank you also for your time. There being no other announcements, item number four is the Town Manager's report.
I don't have anything specifically this evening.
Okay. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy Thirty One to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the board's authority. No one has signed up for public comment this evening, and as a reminder, members of the public have until the end of business on the Monday prior to our Tuesday meetings to sign up, and we encourage those who are interested to do so. Is it seven oh five? Maybe by the time I read this. Item number six on our agenda is a seven oh five P M. Public hearing to review an act on the common vitular license application of Stephanie Sanchez on behalf of The Taco Spot, Inc. DBA The Taco Spot, six Hartford Turnpike. And the owner, Stephanie Sanchez, I believe, is present. So, Ms. Sanchez, would you like to come to the front? Thank you. It's our understanding that this is, this will be the second location of The Taco Spot, and there is one currently in Worcester. Board members, the applicant has provided all of the required materials. Oh, I'm so sorry. The applicant has provided all of the required materials. The building inspector, however, has noted that a certificate of occupancy has not yet been issued. So if applicable, the board's approval should be made conditional upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So maybe just take a quick second to tell us about your business and then...
So it's actually me and my husband, Alex Ortiz. This is our, would be our second location. We've been in the Worcester, we're going on four years now. It's a small family-owned business, and we just want to expand a little in Shrewsbury.
Great. Mr. Dobson speaks highly of your current... We're excited to have you and Shrewsbury Board members. Any comments or questions? Just very excited.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to have you, and we appreciate you coming in to be with us today. But if there are no other questions or comments, take a mo...
I was just curious, do you have an anticipated date for opening?
Depending on everything else going through with the inspections, we're hoping sometime July.
That's great. Welcome to Shrewsbury.
Thank you.
This being a public hearing, is there any member in the audience from the public that would like to speak? Otherwise, I would take motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for us or anything else before we?
No.
Okay. Well, that will be easy.
Thank you, Beth.
All right.
So I move the board approve the common vitral license application of Stephanie Sanchez on behalf of The Taco Spot, Inc., too, doing business as The Taco Spot, six Hartford Turnpike, contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you very much. Item number seven on our agenda is a meeting with Gosha Stalarska, Shrewsbury Solid Waste and Recycling Program Manager, to provide an update on the current state of solid waste and recycling services.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gosha Stalarska, Solid Waste and Recycling Program Manager, and I'm here with...
Hi, I'm Christine Mussum, the D P W Business Manager.
Thank you. Justin has your presentation. Thank you. So we wanted to talk about today a little bit what was and what is happening, what happened in the past fiscal year. We will go over recycling card update and Casella service performance, as well as some data collection information and our recently launched programs. It marks one year since we started distributing our recycling cards. Initially thought we will distribute about ten thousand two hundred cards. It ended up being ten thousand seven hundred thirty-two recycling cards. We keep track of the cards through our spreadsheet, and every time the card is delivered, we receive information from Casella. We keep track of the cards in case of move-ins, move-outs. The cards are logged in. We added additional step to our utility bill review, so we make sure that the card stays with the property and it's assigned to a parcel in case of move-out. Ever since we introduced this program and started recycling cards, only two cards were replaced and purchased by previous owners. They were either taken by mistake to out of the state, or they were just lost. Residents can purchase additional cards. It's a seventy-five dollar cost there. They can also purchase their own cards if they are compatible with the automatic card. And in addition to that, we sold about two hundred fifty-eight additional recycling cards up to date. Can go to next slide. So since fall, we had a little rocky time when Casella took over, but since fall of twenty-four, we've seen significant improvements. Casella has made numerous changes in the past few months, and that led to smoother and more consistent pickups. As a result, both Casella and the town is receiving fewer calls. As you can see, in the last few months, that's the statistics. Most of the calls coming to the D P W is related about the programs and general questions and not complaints, which makes us very happy. As you can see also in the statistics, our bulk pickup program is very well utilized. On average, about twenty-six stops is being picked up weekly, and we expect this number to go up since the weather is getting warmer and people are cleaning out their houses. A quick update about trucks. We finally have two out of four trucks on the road. Those are split-body trucks. Two of them are on the road since mid-May. The last two trucks are in Worcester Ballard Truck Center and are waiting inspection and all the details before they can be sent to Shrewsbury. All of the trucks, I don't know if you can see on the pictures, they have a big town of Shrewsbury logo on the back from both sides, so they're Shrewsbury trucks. And they're equipped with GPS and routing software to improve efficiency. And we're looking forward to those new trucks so we can finally get better collection data, less workload for Casella, and lower carpet footprint. A little recycling data. Since introduction of peso throwbacks in two thousand eight, and we switched to a single stream recycling in July, our recycling rate has significantly improved. It went up from twenty-two point two percent to thirty-three point nine six percent. This amount is projected based on the last month data that we still are missing. But if we go over the last sixteen years, the recycling rate has changed by nine point two nine percent, which would be about zero point five eight percent every year. And if you look at the data between fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-five, that change is about two point four eight percent. So it's a significant change. You can also see the difference in the waste tonnage. Waste tonnage went about, went down about two hundred pounds in a fiscal year, and recycling rate went up about the same amount. And there could be a significant, it could be a different things that make that change from people changing their habits, recycling more. But we also believe that introduction of the recycling cards made the recycling rent go, recycling rate go up. We're also hopeful that other programs that we're implementing will help us lower the waste and again, increase the recycling rate. We wanted to talk a little bit about recently launched programs to promote the sustainability and further reduce the waste. We launched a holiday-like recycling collection and a battery collection program. Those programs are offered at no cost to residents and available here at Town Hall. Residents can just come in and drop off the items. And to help meet the Mass D P requirements and our grant requirements, we started conducting our quarterly recycling contamination audits, as well as we launched our first food waste drop-off program. I wanted to talk a little bit about the recycling audits. So far, we conducted two audits, and during those two audits, out of six hundred twenty pounds of material, we identified about fifty-eight pounds of non-recyclable materials. The audit process involves taking a sample of recycling brought to the facility. It's usually about three hundred pounds. And then by hand, the person is separating the materials, whatever is not recyclable, they set it on a side in a separate bin. And then at the end is, the material is weighed and always documented with pictures. At both audits, in the past half a year, Christine and I, we were present, and we had other staff of our team able to see the process. And in the next slide, we wanted to show you some of the contaminants. So those items came from either Monday or Tuesday stops. As you can see over there, there is a multiple non-recyclable items from a laptop to kitchen appliances, kitchen items, to clothing, textile. And the most common contaminant are the bubble wrap shipping package material from Amazon and all the other items. From the, both of the audits, our recycling contamination was under ten percent. The first rate was seven point three seven percent, and the second one was ten percent. But we would love to be in the lower range. The lower we go, the better rate we receive for disposal. And right now, I would like to, if any of you would like to join us in one of those audits in toward the facility at MRF, we will be happy to have you over there. Probably in the fall month, so it's not too hot and not too cold over there. But yeah, we would love to have you over there, guys. And in the last slide, I would like to share our first food waste drop-off program. This was officially launched a week ago, and we spent many months planning this, and finally, the pilot is here. Since we launched the program on Monday last week, we have ninety-four people sign up for the program. We will be, for a moment, limiting the amount of to one hundred, just to see how the program works, how much capacity we have. I checked today, we have entire, been filled with correct materials, which is, which is exciting. I was a little concerned about contamination. It's very easy to sign up. Residents have to go to open.gov, make the acknowledgement that they agree with the, with the program, that they're not going to place any items that could potentially contaminate the material, and they receive a padlock card that they unlock and use it. And here I wanted to thank everyone who was part of this, making this happen, especially public buildings. They helped assemble the shed, level the lawn, and prepare the platform, and as well, Fleet Department helped with the signage, which looks very nice on the container. That will be it for the update. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
I just realized there's a name for what I do at home. I'm a recycling auditor. I have no idea. I do this on a daily basis because people put things in there that doesn't belong. So here's my question for you. I'm very passionate about this, like correct recycling and the wish for recycling and plastic film. And I see in your pictures, right? That like, that's the thing that keeps getting in the recycling stream that doesn't belong there. Is there any opportunity to have plastic film recycling?
So currently, we don't have that here in the town, but residents can bring the plastic film to Price Chopper or Target. It is at the customer service available to anyone. I think Market Basket also offers that.
I think you're not thinking about the volume of plastic film I have. So I was just wondering, something to kind of put out there. I know I put the food composting, we've talked about a lot, so that's next on my recycling wishlist.
Thank you. I will know that.
Like more than I could bring to Price Chopper without people thinking. But thank you, this is great, really exciting.
Thanks, Gosha, for all the work that you do for this. It's, I love like the data-driven approach that you guys take to all of this and really like measuring our progress and improvements on this. So with the recycling audits, and we see that, you know, there's a certain percentage that we're consistently hitting with contamination in our recycling, and that it costs, it ultimately costs the town more money if we have contaminated recycling. So is there, do we like increase communications, educational campaigns to the public about what can and can't be recycled and how to dispose of the things that they're typically, you know, are typical contaminants that we're seeing in our recycling?
Yes, so after the last audit we had, we sent a news flash notification targeting specific items. And I don't know if any of you received that. There was specific pictures with no Amazon packages, no plastic bubble wrap, no plastic in the recycling. So we're trying to target the area and audience and guide them what to do with those items. And yes, we will definitely work on other notifications.
Yeah. I think I did get that notification, which I think is helpful, you know, even, I think it's a helpful reminder sometimes, like what, you know, just to, you know, things change, the rules change sometimes, and just to be reminded of what we can put out there. But I think in future educational campaigns, just letting people know that it costs us money when our recycling is contaminated. And I think when people realize that ultimately, they'll be saving money if they just take an extra moment to make sure that they're doing, doing it correctly, that might help incentivize some folks.
Thank you.
But thank you for all the work that you do. You know, it's the last couple of years, our trash has been a, has been a rocky road for us. So I appreciate everything that you've done to, you know, help residents figure out how, how we get through it and how to get their issues fixed, and you've done a great job.
I have a couple of questions. First, I know in the contract is July first. I think there's a, I think it says it's a five percent increase in the Casella cost or whatever's higher. The, I think there's a C P I of garbage and trash collection, which I wasn't aware of either. What is the incremental increase from Casella in the contract this year? Is it just the five percent? I'm not sure.
Is this the solid waste contract or hard waste contract?
The solid waste one.
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I don't remember. I was under impression that is the five percent increase, but I will double-check that.
Okay. Yeah, because I think I saw that the C P I for garbage and trash collection was actually five point two from April of twenty-four to twenty-five, so I was just curious. I don't know what that was.
Let me get back to you on that.
I have to second. The second question is curious on, you know, we do get a few notifications on routes not being finished. I think the last one that I remember seeing was somewhere on May twenty-third on recycling. Can you, can you talk a little bit about what drives that or why those are not completed?
So last delays that we were informed were a planning issue on Casella's side before the change happened, and they had new management. There was many drivers that receive a time off, and that, that just happened, that they were not able to finish the route. That's why they went to Saturday. Sometimes they have issues with the truck, which should fix with new trucks that are coming on board, and we shouldn't see that anymore. But particularly, the last pickup was because of the scheduling.
So with that, the other question, I believe, we do have the ability or discretion, I guess, to penalize Casella per contract on that type of incident? Is that accurate?
Yes.
But have we ever done that?
I think we did that once. We tried to work with the hauler. We're in a six-year contract, and if we start penalizing right now, I understand that we should probably do that. But we try to be understandable, and also the contract says that if they notify us and they have a reason for that, we will allow them to finish the route the next day.
Okay. The last one is just, can you comment on, I know that over time, there's been, say, complaints about just the bag quality. Have you seen that lessen as far as complaints from residents about the bags themselves?
Yes, we do receive bags still sometimes. We keep track of the bags. Every time the defective bag arrives, resident comes in, we exchange the bags, and we send this information to the company. Some of the bags that we see are from the older batches. As the stores get a new batch, they not always use the old batch first. They, they take whatever is first, and then you find those bags coming up later. There is no pattern that we noticed recently that will indicate that there is the full defective batch. It's just like random rolls of bags coming up here and there. I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I can give...
But it's getting better, you would say?
Yes, definitely.
Excellent, thank you.
And we increased bag thickness about a year ago in our big run, and that seemed to have really, at least anecdotally from my perspective, really reduced the number of complaints that we have received since we've made that change.
Also, I think it's just the drawstrings have been, I think they were reinforced, right? Because they don't seem to rip apart quite as often as they used to. I know the community did not want flap-tie bags, right? Which is why we stuck with the drawstrings, even though they tended to be the breakpoint. I think it's, they're, they're definitely seem to be reinforced.
Majority of the bags that I see coming are, have, they're not sealed on the side, and that's like manufacturer issue. Something happened with the machine and didn't seal the sides, but I don't see any, no one comes in saying that the bags ripped. Sometimes I would see the bags with, with the ties not attached. So again, the production issue.
Yeah. And we did have a meeting with Way Zero, the bag vendor, a couple of months ago, and they walked us through the, some of the quality control improvements that they've made within their manufacturing processes, et cetera. And they're, they're very focused on ensuring the quality of the product that we're receiving.
If a resident has a bag that is defective, they can bring it?
Yes.
Here or?
They can bring it to the Town Hall and we will exchange the bag. We also have open gov request form that if, we want to hear from residents, or if there is an issue, they can still use the bag, but we would like to hear from them so they have an option to fill out the form over there as well.
Thank you.
I just have some quick ones. Thank you, Gosha, for the information and the presentation. I was curious about the food waste drop-off program. I think that I, I did see a lot of positive reception from that, so really appreciate you hearing that. I'm wondering how long the program, the pilot will run for, if you have that timeline?
So right now, we have it for six months that we have a contract with, with Black Earth for more than that. But we would like to see where we are in six months to reevaluate and how much material we're collecting. Right now, there is a forty-eight gallon bucket filled out within a week, so I anticipate that it's going to be a lot of food waste.
And if I may, I'm curious if there will be like a survey at the end or some, you know, resident feedback? Is that part of the plan? I imagine it is, but...
It is. I didn't put that together yet, but it is definitely something that I will reach out. I have all the email addresses from residents who sign up, so I will reach out to them, and I want to hear back about the program. And it is interesting that fifty percent of the residents that signed up composted before, and about fifty percent did it. So I'm happy to hear that there, see that there is no contaminants inside.
That's awesome. Thank you, and then just one, one last one. I don't think I realized that we had a Holiday Lights recycling program.
Yes.
Is there any information you could provide on that in terms of like what, I guess, how many folks have utilized that opportunity?
So right now, we collected about thirty-six gallons of material. I counted in gallons because I collect the lights in the old recycling bins that we used to have. So we filled two of them right now. I don't know how many pounds is that. I didn't get there yet, but definitely when we sent the news flash, we had several people come in to the Town Hall. There you go, here are the bags.
Thank you.
You mentioned capping the pilot for the food waste stopoff at a hundred?
Yes.
Residents. Do you intend to keep it capped at a hundred for the full six months? Do you feel like you need sort of that study group? Or if you get into it a month or two and you feel like there's additional capacity, would you consider increasing it?
Definitely. We want to see how, how often we fill out those two buckets. Right now, it took us one week. And part of the survey that I would like to conduct is to see how many, how many times residents are using the drop-off. If it's once a week, if it's three times a week, that way we'll have more information on how much food waste we can expect to be there. on how much food waste we can expect to be there. And after, I would say, two weeks, if we can extend this program to other people, we will.
Great, thank you. Well, I echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you for all you do. You've really brought some new and innovative and creative solutions to Shrewsbury and we see how hard you work and we appreciate it. So thank you for coming in tonight as well and providing this update.
Thank you.
Item number eight is to review and act to adjust the solid waste enterprise program fees and charges. So there was a public hearing at our last meeting and Mr. Mizikar reviewed the fiscal '26 adjustments needed in order to maintain a 50-50 revenue balance between the solid waste enterprise fund and the tax levy. The board also discussed the approach to pay as you throw fees in subsequent years. So I'm going to ask Mr. Mizikar to recap the proposed adjustments before we vote on this. Please.
So as was just mentioned, the goal with the program, which it has been since its inception, was to offset the burden of the solid waste program from being solely on the tax rate to being shared by the users of the system. And those fees are primarily generated through the sale of blue bags. And as the costs of the programs have grown, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting there, we will see an approximate 5% price increase for hauling charges at the start of the fiscal year. And since we haven't adjusted rates in six years, it was time to take a look at it. So we are proposing adjustments to both the large and small bags. It's roughly a 10% increase on, on both of those, adjusting the cost of a small bag up 15 cents. And the roll from 550 to 625, the large bags moving from 225 to 254, and then the rolls going from 1125 to 1270. We are looking at a longer-term adjustment horizon as we've done with other utilities recently. Whenever we've looked at the rates, we do need to keep up with the cost of the program itself and the hauler charges and the tipping fees and all the ancillary charges that it costs us to manage the program. So while we're only asking for a single year rate increase from the board, we do anticipate coming back year over year to make incremental adjustments. The one point of clarification that I needed to provide from the meeting last week during the public hearing was the question surrounding the equity or subsidized rate for bag. So that will not stay static over the timeframe, even the five-year period. It will remain a 10% decrement over the standard bag price. So it will move over time as well, so that that gap doesn't get too large and, and we can follow the same rules as we do with the standard charges. So in summary, you know, the average household, based upon number of households that we service and the total bags that we sell, that will be a little less than $16 annual increase if we make this adjustment. And we are asking that the board implement this later in July. I believe it's for July 21st. So that we, we need that additional time to be able to work with our vendors to adjust the, the pricing and logistics behind the scene associated with the program. So no other changes from what was presented last week in the public hearing.
Board members, any comments or questions? I have a comment. You know, no one wants to see prices go up, right? I know that there's plenty of, of community members who have expressed their concern with the increase in the price. I think it's really important to just reiterate that the bags are a means to an end, right? That we need to be able to fund solid waste and recycling for the community. That's a decision that we've made. And in order to do that in a way that's equitable and that doesn't put all of the burden on the tax rate, we need to do this 50-50 split. I just calculated for my own home, right? I use one large bag a week, so I'm not even spending, at the current rates, $11.25 a month for my trash to be picked up. I feel like that's a bargain and that we are providing really good service to residents at a reasonable price. And so I think, you know, if you look at 10%, 10% sounds a lot bigger than the actual change and increase in dollars and cents. And I just think that it's important to just remind the community that, you know, there are, there are cities and towns who have decided that they can no longer afford to provide curbside recycling and, and solid waste pickup for their residents. We aren't that community, I don't think we want to be that community. But that also means that we have to, you know, pay for what it's going to cost. And I think this program is equitable. You know, the more trash you make, the more you're going to pay, right? We have this great new opportunity for some composting. I know that that drastically reduced the amount of, of blue bags that I was using in my home. So I'm, I'm grateful for the work that Gosha and her team is doing and I hope that the residents understand, you know, that we don't take this lightly, but that it is something we need to do if we wanted to continue offering this, this service to residents.
I just want to echo my colleagues' comments there. I, I agree, I think it's a very valuable, but very cost-effective service for, I think, what you're actually getting. And it's one of the few things I think you have control over your own costs. So if it's something that you can be mindful and now take more, maybe more advantage of recycling more and being thoughtful of what you're throwing away to try to help mitigate some of the costs. But like you say, even, even, you know, from a, the cost in the contracts, $178 per stop per year, I, I would, that's very attractive from a price standpoint. I would try to figure out, how would you get somebody else to pick up your trash for the whole year for $178? I mean, that's, that's, it's a pretty good price. So yes, while we don't like to increase anything, I think in this particular case, when our costs are going up, that has to come from somewhere. And we don't want to take it away from, let's say, other programs, the regular tax levy. So I think it's something that we, we need to be doing.
Agree with the comments, I think we're all very sensitive and we know it's not necessarily just the increase here, but increases in general cost of living across many services for residents. And so we really did try to make this as, as low as possible to maintain the service levels that residents have come to expect. So if there are no further comments, I will entertain a motion.
So I move that the board adjusts the solid waste enterprise program fees and charges as outlined in our document.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number nine is to review an act to amend the water rules and regulations. I believe Tim Maroney, Water and Sewer Superintendent.
Hello.
Presenting along with our DPW Director, Tim McInerney. Good evening, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. I'm Tim McInerney, DPW Director. I was hired in October, as you well know, but for the public that might be listening. With me tonight are Tim Maroney, who was with the Water Department for a while before he was promoted back in January. He's going to walk you through some of the regulations that we're proposing. You'll probably note, there'll be a, he'll do the crosswalk from what you had in the 12-page document versus what we're looking to improve upon. I try to start with the why of this. I think the board should know that this process started before Tim was hired, before I was hired, and we're kind of carrying the water, so to speak, for, for other folks. But the why behind this is really to get our unaccounted-for water under control, because you all know what your unaccounted water is. And we need access to homes to be able to change out those meters and/or ERTSs, which is electronic devices that allow us to read meters. I won't get into the detail of that piece, but it's extremely inefficient to have someone drive by and collect that data when we can send it electronically through the AMI network back to SOCO, to our billing software. So that's what we're trying to do, that's the driving force behind it. When I mentioned that the first set of regs, you know, went through this process, this is an iterative process, we look for feedback, we want to make the right, best decisions for the community. We need your input to do that. We took another community's document, we made it our own, and then we went to Weston and Sampson in terms of the process of how we got to where we are. Went to Weston and Sampson, had them review it. We did an internal review with them and then we sent it to legal counsel for review and approval. And then finally here with you, with the Water Commission. If we've missed something, we have no problem coming back to you. If there's an item that's important to you that you want us to address, we will do that. We're going to give you a lot of information, so be patient, take it in. We, we wanted to go for July 1 effective date, but our pilot has been pushed back for our delivery until June 30th, so there's no urgency here. But I think we wanted, we had plans, at least internally, to come to you before this point for July 1, to give enough time and notice and so forth. So having said that, I give you a lot of pieces there. Tim's going to give you more details on the regs, but this is not a one-and-done. You are the commission and you have the ultimate authority. We're staff making you, making a recommendation to you relative to these regulations. So I'll stop talking, let Tim, let you drink from a fire hose.
Good evening, Select Board and Mr. Mizikar. As Tim mentioned, I'm Tim Maroney, I'm the Water and Sewer Superintendent here in town. And the purpose of my presentation this evening is to review the memo sent in regards to the update in the, to the water rules and regulations. So why a 2025 update? The original regulations, uh, current regulations date back to 2012 and are extremely limited and are primarily focused on water line installations. They lack broader administrative and customers, customer-related provisions. In recent years, we've seen changes in state-level water safety standards and a growing need to, a growing need for utilities to formalize their policies around enforcement and service conditions. Updating the regulations helps ensure that Shrewsbury maintains in compliance and is responsive to modern expectations from both regulars and residents. So the limits of the 2012, or originals, I should say, they were really originally drafted in 2012 and it's primarily technically-based document. It outlines, it outlines how new water services should be installed, which would include trenching, pipe specs, meter installation and inspections. Enforcement mechanisms were very limited, focused mostly around non-payment or illegal connections. There's also no mention of cross-connection control or water conservation in these current regs. The 2025 draft represents a comprehensive shift. We still retain the important technical standards for installation, but we've added essential policies like formal cross-connection control to protect the water system. We've also introduced billing and enforcement procedures that are transparent and enforceable. Just as important, the draft defines what customers are responsible for, such as maintaining backflow devices if applicable. We've been working to modernize how water services manage to better serve the community. And as Tim mentioned, a big part of that is, involves around reducing unaccounted-for water. So essentially, it's water that's billed, that's, comes from the plant, but is not billed, whether it's from leaks or defective meters, defective reading equipment, or billing issues. Addressing this not only supports the DEP compliance, but also would increase revenues that would go back into the system. As part of that effort, the, the role of service shut-offs has shifted. While we, while still a last resort, they now help ensure water uses accurately tracked and billed, supporting fairness for all customers. Any recovered revenue goes back into maintaining and improving the system. Above all, we're committed to working with residents and offering support whenever that is needed. Next slide, Justin? So this is kind of at a glance of where the limit, you can kind of visually see the limitations of our current regs and our update. Oh, sorry, here, I can't see it. So yeah, so as you can see, the, the scope of the 12, 2000 currents are installation-specific, where the 2000 dra, 2005, 2025 draft is comprehensive. It's 54 pages versus 12, I think we said. And the cross-connection control is not addressed at all in, in the currents. 2025 is fully integrated. Customer responsibility, there's no mention of it really in the currents. It's clearly defined in our updated draft. Can't see what that one says.
Which one?
The one that's got the thing already.
Baseline?
Oh, yeah.
Basic limited.
Yeah, basic limited.
Thanks. And obviously, it's structured and transparent in our updated draft. Termination of service is very limited versus broad authority with no safeguards. Conservation is not addressed and now it's enforceable policy goal. And construction standards, service lines only, the new draft would be water mains and services. Okay, sorry. So what's changing for the residents? These new regulations will give residents a clear guidance on what's expected for them as water customers. This includes protecting their meter, maintaining backflow devices if applicable. Conservation is now formalized, so during droughts, limits on watering and non-essential use may be enforced. We're also improving the billing and appeals process in defining when the service may be shut off, for example, for meter tampering or excessive unrepaired leaks. This is not cooperating with me. So communication and support for residents, we know change can cause uncertainty, so we're prioritizing giving these updates to the residents. Our thought is that the residents will receive a mailer with a QR code with an update, providing a link to the new regulations. And again, I just want to stress, before like any actions taken in terms of a shut-off, we give advance notice, warning and help residents resolve the issue cooperatively and with flexibility. And internally, our staff will also be trained to answer questions and provide guidance on how to stay in compliance. Next slide. And ultimately, the goal here is to benefit residents. With clearer rules and updated standards, we expect fewer service disruptions and stronger protection of the water supply. These improvements also support water quality, not just at the tap, but throughout the entire system, from service lines to treatment to distribution. By strengthening every part of the infrastructure, we help safeguard public health and maintain confidence in the water we deliver every day. The new structure promotes fairness while transparent billing and a clear appeals process improve customer service. Together, these updates protect the system long-term and reflect our commitment to managing the utility in a responsible, proactive way. And for the future, ultimately, this is about future-proofing our utility. These updates help us manage infrastructure more strategically. We can respond confidently to oversight and serve the public fairly. By putting clear policies in place today, we're setting ourselves up for better outcomes tomorrow and strengthening public trust in the system. And that's, that's it. I do just want to say that there was a lot of hours worked by a lot of people on this and BMD staff, my staff, Mr. Mizikar's office also. So there's a lot of people and a lot of hours that went into this. So I just want to, I'd be, I wanted to thank them in a public forum, so. That's, that's what I got.
Thank you. It, it's clear, a lot of work was put in it. There's a lot of information.
Yes.
And I anticipate we're going to have a lot of questions. So thank you very much for being here this evening. Board members, I'll open it up to you. Anyone would like to ask any questions? Anyone want to start? Michelle?
I have some questions, thanks. I have a question, I have a couple of questions for you. With, you mentioned that conservation efforts, they'll be formalized. And so for example, during droughts, there may be limits on watering and non-essential water use enforcement. How would that be monitored and enforced in those types of situations?
So I know we have, I don't, I don't think we actively have been practicing this, but I know there are, I've seen the little tickets, I think there's.
Door hangers.
There's door hangers. And I know in the past, they've driven around and kind of patrolled, I guess, to see if, if that's in fact happening, so.
It's probably more response, a neighbor calls about the neighbor.
Yeah, we get down a lot.
We'll go tell them, hey, the restriction's in place. There's certainly signage boards, electric message signs, you know, obviously Facebook, all those places we would post if that was in effect. And then letters would have to go. Every step that's, I don't know what section, since 7.7 or 7.2, just outlines the lettering process for giving them notice that they're in violation of that. for giving them notice that they're in violation of that.
May I ask a follow-up? Of course. There, you mentioned updating, you know, procedures and, you know, SOPs and things like that. Is there a timeline for when those internal, like, sort of processes and logistics will be put in place?
I know kind of as a, as a department, we kind of are looking to upgrade a lot of SOPs across the board. So I think a lot of our goal work for this fiscal year will be kind of related to updating SOPs, so.
All right, and then just one more if I may. You, there, you know, there's some like performance metrics that you guys mentioned in that and just curious if there's a plan to, you know, review some of these metrics, like as you start collecting them, you know, in a year, a year and a half or something, as we get this new system implemented, to kind of look at the success and any adjustments that we need to make in it? So is there like a plan for that, like reporting back at some point, looking back at?
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of the water pump from the system and what's billed, that matrix needs to be evaluated. All of the, not INI, but leak detection programs and when we make those corrective actions to make sure that hydrant's not leaking, and we find leaks in the system or water main breaks and make those repairs. We, we have to document and report those anyway. So I don't know if there's a, a formal structure in our minds yet to, to give you something other than what's in the annual quality, annual water quality report or in the monthly reports we submit to the manager. In terms of breaks and customer service calls and so forth.
Okay.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question? I mean, I understand that the regulations that we currently have drafted 202012 are lacking in terms of the detail. But do you think you could summarize for me, like, what, what will change for, from a resident's perspective in terms of, of process? Like, what are the big takeaways here? Like, something that a resident is experiencing today that you expect will change tomorrow? To me, I think a lot of it is clarity, maybe around, you know, we talk about enforcement or, you know, billing issues, et cetera. But, I mean, you kind of have a practice today. Are there, is anything going to change your practice tomorrow, when this is passed?
When we started this process, I, I asked, do we do the things that we're writing down right now? And we really are. We're reaffirming what the DEP tells us we have to do and what EPA tells us we have to do for the quality of water. And so operationally, the things that are in the 57-page document are things that we currently do. We just want transparency and ratification, or verification of the boards, the water commission to say, these practices in which we're doing now, we can, can and should continue to do.
Okay, so nothing really standing out as a material change from current practice to what you would? Anything new that you're implementing?
No.
That you're not currently?
I don't think anything immediate I can think of at the moment.
Okay.
To, to be crystal clear, when we move forward with changing out ERTs and we send a notice to your home and say, we need to get in because it's not functioning properly, we want to have access. If we can't get access, you know, we got to go through a notice procedure and then the worst last case, which I hope never happens, we would have to shut that water off. Just like if you didn't pay your gas bill, your electric bill, your internet bill, that utility would be shut off because we can't read that meter. So we, that's the, you would do that now, but we're saying it in the document, that's how we will proceed.
So what you intend to do, so a resident says, you identify an issue, you need to access the meter, the resident says no. Does this enable you to override that resident decision? Or is it just documenting that if the resident continues to not cooperate, that the last course of action would be?
Would be to shut, shut it off and, and tell this compliance that we can go in and change out that meter or ERT to be able to read what the water usage is. And you have to remember, this goes back to, it's a utility, it's an enterprise fund, can't be subsidized by tax dollars. So that revenue, when I talked about the 30% loss of water, that's, that's 30%. Part of it's in meters, some of it's other places. But a lion's share of that 30% loss is because meters are from the 1970s and they simply don't work. And so that's $2 million of revenue you're never realizing. So that's why we're implementing the meter and ERT replacement program to, to do that. You know all that piece. So I just, this is just the, kind of the leg we need to stand on in order to implement that at 100%. That's consistent with what we talked about, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a lot of concerns actually over the way the regulations were written. I actually shared them with Mr. Mizikar, but I don't disagree with conceptually what you're saying, but the problem I have is when you read the regulation, it doesn't align with what you've just articulated. Because if you look at, for instance, that section two through right of access, it actually just says that you're able, you know, to pretty much access anybody's property when kind of at your discretion. And it just says, if, if it's refused, you can shut the water off in three days. It doesn't outline the process which you're talking about. So my more concern is that the document should mirror what the practice is. And I think that there's some disconnects when I read it that gives, in my opinion, a little bit too much authority to, let's say, the water department when it comes to accessing property, and then there's.
It is a strong piece of language, there's no doubt.
Yeah, and it's not consistent because around the metering, and this is why I wanted to clean up, is that in the metering section, it is more specific about the process when you talk about, I don't remember exactly the timelines, I didn't remember this whole.
Yeah, I think it's three and five and seven days.
That one has a more specific seven days, seven days, but in, right up front, it's essentially saying, hey, if, if somebody doesn't let you in the home, you can shut the water off in three days. That's what, that's what it states. So that's an area that I think we should at least have it reflect exactly what we're doing in practice. Then the other, I guess, vague question if I may, is, not a vague question, but there's a few references to emergency. And emergency is not really defined in the document. And then the other, with the emergency provisions, there's also remedy. The remedy is vague as well because it says in any means deemed appropriate, which is often vague to me, which could say, shut off the water, worst case. So can you talk a little bit about, when you say emergency, like, what does that cover?
So emergency can mean a lot of things. It could be massive water main break, it could be a storage tank failure, it could be treatment plant failure, it could be, like, we lost the, one of our main wells over the.
Winter.
In, in the summer, two years ago, and there was, we were getting to the point where we might have to start restricting use because we're going to run out of water. There could be.
It could be a fire.
There could be a bacterial issue. It could, I mean, it's, it's hard to quantify exactly what an exact emergency is. It could be, we could find something new we never thought was an emergency until it is.
Okay, and then how, I guess, in those instances, just how does that impact a resident? So if an emergency occurs, what would that, and I know it's not everybody in town potentially, but I guess it could be, depending on, like you said, if it's crypto-spiridium, like when I was in Milwaukee, crypto-spiridium.
There you go.
You don't want that. But what could it be? Like, like what would be the impact to a resident?
So water main break, you could be without water for eight, 10, 12 hours. That's definitely, we've seen, we had the one on Clue Street a couple of weeks ago. I know people were upset, rightfully so. I mean, it's a long time to go without water. We, we send crews out, we work as best diligently and safely as we can to restore service in a situation like that. Other situations, like when we lose that well, we just, we don't have a well, a spare pump and motor sitting on a shelf. So that was, I mean, it felt like forever, but it was, I think, almost two months where we had that well up and running again. So it's very, you know, I guess it's situationally how it, how it plays out.
Yeah, I, I gave the example with the managers. If there was a, it'd have to be an enormous fire emergency where, you know, they needed flow, they needed pressure, and they had to shut off gate valves along Maple, for example, to get enough pressure at the top of the common, for the church. If something like that were to happen, that would be an example, extreme example of having to shut someone off. With a water main break, we're not shutting them off, they just don't have water. If there was a boil notice because there was something wrong with the water, that would be, you know, just a notice and that's a good public health piece. But if boiling wouldn't solve it, and we could shut it off at the curb stop, we would do that because we don't want to contaminate the people in the home. If, I mean, that's just, I mean, I've never heard of it happening. But that's an extreme situation. I don't know really how to define it other than if we put it in a, appendices, emergencies may include up to.
Yeah.
These, you know, six or five, six or seven things.
It's vast.
So just to clarify on clarification. So then the, the remedy of it to the resident could be, you know, the worst case is lack of service, correct? Whether it's because, A, there's water main, there's no physical water going there, or to your examples, you actually have to shut off that. But that would be, would there be like an emergency notification set up where people, all that, okay?
The, the protocols in BMD are unbelievable in terms of getting information out from a delay in trash to a water main break. They're, they have canned responses, which is good, templated. And then there's people that, you know, verify and then submit and then are on call to update those throughout the course of that event. So we're, I think we're so much more responsive than any other community I've ever been a part of or worked in. So in terms of trying to update people, we just got to get the information to them.
I think a lot of times, they have the information before we even have crews out there. That's how fast it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for being here. I, I had a question. There was a section about fire hydrants and saw in there that fire hydrants on private property shall be inspected once per year. Is that the same for ones on public property or?
We, yeah, we try to get out and look at hydrants as much. I think we have 1,600 hydrants over that, so it's.
And you, you do that in the year?
We try. It's not always exact, but we try to at least get a good, a good chunk of them. And I know you've probably seen some of the guys up and down the main roads here painting over the last couple of weeks. So they'll visually inspect them during those times too, so.
That's helpful, so thank, thank you for that. I have some technical ones. There were references to things that I don't think were spelled out in there. So I saw several references to the AWWA, which I believe is the American Water Works Association.
Correct.
Just if, if that could be updated and have that spelled out in there. I think that would be helpful for folks who eventually read it. I didn't see it, but maybe it is in there. I could be wrong.
I can double-check that, though.
Thank you. And then I think there were several references to this being a bylaw. Is that accurate, that this is a bylaw?
It's not a bylaw.
Right, so can we have those references be updated to be something else, policy or regulations?
Is it the reference, there are bylaws, this itself is not a bylaw, but there are.
I thought that I had.
It is ruled by certain bylaws. So I wonder, is it referencing the bylaw or is it calling itself?
There's a conservation bylaw that I think there's reference.
I think it does. I just found it through a search, didn't see it before, of course. It does say this bylaw or these bylaws.
Right, and it says that a few times, so.
Thank you.
Go Carlos.
So those are my, my, my technical ones. I think back to our discussion on, I gotta find it, the right of access, I think. I know that you would, you said this, that you would work with the property owners as much as possible to try to get access to, to the property to, to do the work that you have to do. I think in here, there was a three-day notice prior to a shut-off if you don't get the access. And for me, that feels a little bit too short. Is that common in other communities for the three-day?
I think that was the template we used. It, it, I guess this goes back to the emergency, depending on what the need is. If it's just to get access, we're, you know, we're going to be flexible. And at the end of the day, you have to remember that you're a public body, you know this, and, you know, someone could come to you, if we're not acting appropriately, you have a manager that's going to get us in line. And if not, you ultimately can, can rain down upon us if we're, if we're ever out of step with the board or the commission. Just.
And I trust you, I'm not applying anything.
Separate piece, but I just, we acknowledge that.
Thank you for that.
Can I say something? So historically, the board may remember, a couple of years ago, we contemplated like a blue-stake policy. And, and these put it in a better context, right? It allows us to do that. And it does provide longer lead times than three days when it comes to lack of responsiveness, you know, for a meter replacement. I mean, very, I don't know how interesting it is, but I'll say very interestingly, we, we, we have struggled, you know, whenever, in 2017, when I got here, we were in the midst of a meter replacement project and we, we really struggled to get residents' attention. Some that may have been purposeful, some, you know, was just inconvenient and we couldn't make a good connection. But, you know, I really feel that this is moving in that direction. And also, when I got here, you know, we were always looking for this massive water leak that was seeping into Lake Quinsigaman or something. But the more that we have been able to narrow, define, utilize data, you know, replacing these meters is, you know, it's not, we're not losing the water, most of it. It's, we're not, we're not tracking it at the end like we're tracking it when we pull it out of the ground. So very important to underscore what was, has already been said.
That's helpful, thank you. And I, I just have one more. Under the service line installations, no new water service shall be installed in the public right of way from December through April. Is that weather conditions, is that?
Yeah, and that would be, obviously, emergencies would be, someone's water line's leaking, they'll fix it, but we won't install new lines.
It's consistent with your road opening permits as well.
Right, that's what I figured, thank you.
Just a comment, actually more of a question. Thank you for this. I think it does really clarify, right, what's resident responsibility and what's town responsibility, which I think is helpful because I know that question comes up a lot when there's a leak someplace, who owns the pipe? So I think this is helpful for that and also, you know, putting down on paper what your practice is. I agree with what you were just saying about the three days, right? We want to make sure that if it's not an emergency, right, that we give residents as much lead time as possible before shutting off water. And I think that's what I hear, right? I'm hearing, we want to work with residents. I think you can put out this entire document to the community and I think the one thing that's going to like stick in people's minds is the fines for watering your lawn. So can you talk to me a little bit about, about that and when that goes into effect, right? Because I hear this all the time from people, it's rained 13 weekends in a row. Why do we have to conserve water between, you know, May and whatever, October, however we do it? And I'm a little concerned about neighbors ratting out neighbors, you know, that they're watering lawns when they shouldn't. I think people are busy. I know that it's hard to remember which days are your watering days and you might water on the wrong day. Does that mean you're going to end up with your neighbor calling you in and you get a $50 fine? Can you just help me explain when this would be, when it would be that you couldn't water and what you're thinking about, you know, why we need to have a fine in place in order to, to change the behavior?
I mean, it's a carrot, we don't have a carrot, so all we have is a stick in this instant. But DEP, not to kick the can someplace else, but we don't, it's, it's not us making the determination of not to water, right? It's DEP. Don't they, don't they set the regulations?
They had, we had to have a water conservation policy. I didn't think DEP went as far as to say, and you have to make sure your residents don't water their lawns in accordance with.
No, I don't think.
XYZ.
I can double-check on that. I think that's just what we do.
So it's, but it's local? Because I know they do it in Gravina, I see the sign every time I drive by.
Yeah, other towns I've broken into.
You can't do it, it's still technically in a drought, even though you would never know it right now. But we can, we, we have to check on that, I think.
I mean, I understand, right, if we are actually in a drought, and I'm not sure that we're in a drought right now, I think we might be out.
It's over.
It's done.
Is it officially?
Here in Central Mass.
It's over in our area, I believe. Like, I get that, right? Like, you talked about when the well pump failed and we had to open up the emergency connection with Worcester. Like, I get, don't water the lawn, right? But I, I hesitate to change people's behavior by fine, giving them a fine, right? Because I just, I don't think that's actually going to change their behavior. I think it's just going to make people angry. And I would rather that people conserve water because they wanted a lower water bill or because they wanted to do the right thing for the planet, not because their neighbor told on them and then someone from the water department came out and slapped them with a $50 or $100 fine. So I think it's just, we need to be really clear about when the watering is okay and when the watering isn't okay. Um, and again, I just, I'm not thrilled with the fines.
May I just sort of ask for clarification there? Have you been finding violators?
No.
You haven't?
No. I, I don't even think, I can't even think of any calls that I've gotten about people.
Prior today?
Since I've been in this role in, in six months, it's been nice out for a couple of weeks. So I haven't got any calls personally about anyone watering or when they shouldn't be. I haven't got any.
So if you did identify violators in the past, did these fines, were they applicable or are they new?
I am not sure.
I don't think we've, generally, generally speaking, municipalities have the board of health does the issuing of the ticket. There's no. And again, this is down a thread relative to the non-criminal disposition, which I don't know if this community has or not. So it's tough to, I don't know that piece.
Can I, can I just clarify one piece? Our, our comprehensive water permit from DEP, which was issued in July of twenty five, requires the town to enforce a seasonal non-essential outdoor water restriction from May first through September thirtieth. So that, that prohibits wa- non-essential outdoor watering in the way that the board votes on it every April, right? So it can't, it can happen before nine AM or after five PM, even number streets, Wednesdays and Saturdays, odd number streets. That is written in our permit. So sometimes we don't like to kick the can to DEP. Oftentimes we do. Like it is a DEP requirement. We, we, we are bound by that. So, you know, DEP hasn't been pushing us hard on it, but it is within our comprehensive permit. And, um, is our obligation to, to do the best that we can. I know we haven't issued a, I, I, I don't recall issuing a fine since I've been here. Um, but I think it's important to have a framework in place in case something is needed for us to make sure that we can maintain that permit and our compliance and not be subject to DEP fines.
Hmm. So are you saying the fines from DEP due to our lack of oversight and enforcement?
Absolutely. They have, they would have the right to do that, to enforce the permit.
I think that that's something, you know, cause I agree, I, 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 I'm still struggling with, is it, is it a po- it's, doesn't seem to be a written, this is a, 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 a fine today. Sorry, I'm having trouble speaking this evening. Um, and I think that gets to my initial question, which is what is changing? I just want to be very clear. I would like for you to be clear with us in terms of what is new that has the impact, uh, the potential impact for residents. And the last thing I want is to find out that we put these regulations in place. And then we have all these residents that all of a sudden are getting fines, that were doing things that they didn't know, or they've been doing things that they've been doing historically. But now all of a sudden there's a fine. It's just, those are the types of things we need eyes wide open. And we need to collectively make sure that we are in agreement with, with change. So, um, and I think being clear and, and to Beth's point, communicating expectations to residents and giving them ten respond. But I feel like something like this, it's, it's sort of, I, I am a little concerned about, um, the equity of it. Because one person gets ratted out, like, I don't think you're going to have water police, you know, going through all the streets. Shrewsbury, like seeing people. So someone sort of violates the water restrictions and has nothing happen to them. But another resident, you know, kind of goes through the three stages of, of fines. So, um.
Can I just make two points? One is relative to, you know, us not, you not knowing the days of the week, right? We, we need to do a better job of conveying what's in that permit to the public so they'll know. So we should just check that box. We should just.
Well, I know my days, but I mean, I don't expect.
Yeah, you don't know, eh, you know.
People are busy, like Tuesday and Thursday or Fridays. Like, it's just really difficult.
We should just give, you know, bits and pieces of updates throughout the summer of what, what it is and what the permit says. And then we can go back and revisit this particular piece relative to the fine. I'm sure we can call it just the tool that we have in the worst case scenario. But if the, if the commission doesn't want to have a fine venue, we, we, we can strike it.
I'm okay with a warning. Look, this is why we do this. I, I'm not sure that DEP says we have to have a fine. I don't want to anger DEP, but at the same time, I don't want to anger the residents either. And I don't want to put something more on them for, you know, if we don't have to.
Just to, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm looking at the document here and there is an existing bylaw, the Article eighteen, that's referenced here that already had those fines listed. So am I correct to think that, I believe we already have those in place?
Thank you.
At the same levels?
Okay. I was trying to figure out if they currently exist or if they.
Yeah, that's right. It seems like they do.
Okay.
But maybe they're just not publicized or people aren't aware that that bylaw even exists maybe.
Article eighteen of our general bylaws is water use restrictions.
Yeah. And, and so E, under E outdoor, it says, any water consumer who violates and the fences, I believe align with what's in the regulations, or at least proposed regulations.
Right. And I read that, but like, my question is, so when? Is that in an emergency situation where there's a drought or is that all the time? Cause when I read that, it seems like you should never water your lawn. So I personally am not like clear. It's like no irrigation, no hoses, like no manual sprinkler. Like, is that really what it's supposed to be? Cause that seems like really restrictive.
Well, I think it says it may, well, the, the language here is, there's a may. It says may include one of more of the following. And I believe the way we implemented it was limited uses during that time period. But any violation of that, the way I think this reads is that that fine schedule would apply.
Well, I think what I'm feeling like is we need to know the answer to that definitively before we can recommend this to the public. Cause I, I think this is the one thing that people are gonna be like, can I water my lawn or not? And is the town really telling me that I can't?
If I may, I, I think section four of Article eighteen, which applies to a state of water supply conservation, that states the fines begin as a written warning, then fifty dollars, then one hundred. And then a subsequent would be a, a turn off of the water service plus a two hundred dollar fine for a reconnection fee. And then if it's a state of emergency where DEP has declared a significant water shortage, the fine initially is fifty, one hundred, two hundred. So there's a different set of fines based on whether we're in a conservation period or an emergency period. According to that Article eighteen.
Beth, I think I had, um, maybe interrupted you. I jumped on one of your questions.
No, you're fine. Keep going. I'm, I'm, I think I've said all I need to say about outdoor water. I don't even water my lawn. Like, I'm the.
I don't either.
That's because you don't want to cut it.
But I also know that if you can't water your lawn, your lawn becomes mud. And then you have that added cost of figuring out what to do with your mud in your yard. So I just want to make sure that we're really mindful about this and we make sure we're clear about what people can and cannot do.
We thought we cross resolutions everything. We didn't, we didn't look at the bylaw. So shame on us. We'll do, we'll do a better job when we come back.
We, um, this is helpful. I, I appreciate the efforts that you're going through. It, it is really important. Um, it's not responsible to be operating the, the enterprise that you are currently without more comprehensive, um, regulations. So really appreciate it. I think, I'm sorry, Greg, did you?
No, I just had a couple. I wanted to ask another question on another topic before we.
You may go right ahead and ask a question.
Sorry. Um, I want to go back to about metering. I just want a clarification because it is written about, uh, the ability, essentially that when it's deemed appropriate, you know, again, that we can change meters out. And as you mentioned, technology changes and things are changing. While I understand the efficiencies of not, uh, having to manually, let's say, drive around and, and read meters. I know, for instance, there's bills currently in, in the state legislature. Actually, I think one was sponsored by Senator Moore about allowing people to opt out of, we'll say, quote unquote, smart metering. So if something like that would occur, I guess, how would that impact, um, that, let's say, whether reading of meters or billing and things like that, where you're giving people options? Because I think there is a concern amongst some two-pronged approach. One of which, at some point in time, we could have technology that would allow you to shut off people's water remotely without actually physically having to go there potentially. And then there is another one of just, you know, having people's biological response, some more than others on RF type interference. So I guess, what are your thoughts on that? And if there were to be, let's say, legislative passed that says people would have an option or could opt out of that type of meter?
Well, the state legislature is gonna preempt us, but right now we want to go to this AMI network. If, if someone were, was allowed to opt out, we would have to physically go in their house and read their meter on a monthly basis. Because we want to go to a monthly billing instead of the section by section billing cycle that they have now. So there'll be a lot of options too for the, the resident to see what their use is and, you know, get accurate information. Then we can monitor leaks in the system, add someone's resident and, and give them notice so they can fix those leaky toilets. They might run for thirty days, which can be thousands of gallons. So that's what, that's why we want the AMI and one of the reasons, I should say. But I would say we have to, short answer for you is to, we're gonna have to physically go in their house and read their meter. And it's just time consuming and very expensive. So I wouldn't recommend it, but if that's allowable, then we're gonna have to cross that bridge and update these regs if it comes to fruition.
Just say something. So, you know, you talk about, you know, people's toilets are running for thirty days or something. Um, you know, you think about seniors that live on their own that may have impaired hearing. Um, my grandmother lives independently, she's ninety-one years old, she wears hearing aids. But, um, you know, she wouldn't necessarily hear a toilet running. And we, you know, all, all, we all visit her frequently. We're in her house all the time. So, you know, she has people that say, hey, you know, there's something going on here. We need to fix this. But that can add up really quickly for somebody who, you know, doesn't, may not even be able to hear that there's an issue and, um, have somebody in their home often enough to, to notice that. And so there is definitely a benefit, um, with, with these smart meters.
There's a lot of details we worked out. I mean, I know we're talking in general terms, but to be able to get an, an alert on our system to, we can set parameters. They can send us an email that says, you know, someone who's been in the system for a year, they used a thousand gallons a month and they've gone to six thousand. We get that, we can do something about that. We can make that phone call. And that's the customer centric piece we want to fulfill. And we want to conserve water.
Leaks that happen between, I, I, I understand that once it leaves the street, it's the homeowner's responsibility, right? So if there's a leak that happens between the street and.
Yeah, between the gate and the meter.
Curve box in their house. We're responsible from the curb box, um, back to them watering.
Yeah. So from, from there to their home, if there was, yeah, if there was a, a leak like in, under their lawn. Um, there was, it happened in my neighborhood a few years ago. Um, there was, you know, in, in, it was just a small, all you could see coming out of their yard was a little trickle of water coming out onto the street. But they had, you know, their, their lawn was, you know, a sinkhole at that point. So, um, so there is, you know, there are certainly benefits to the smart metering that, you know, could save.
We would never know that.
People, right?
Right? Cause it's on this side of the meter.
Oh, on that side of the meter.
When it runs through, that's the only way we get that data. But.
Yeah.
That's an important point because there's pieces of that that we need to educate people. If they do see things like that, they should call us so we can go investigate it.
Yeah.
Cause we should fix it.
And that's part of our leak detection that we do too. Like they'll hear that, a small leak like that. They'll hear from a hydrant, so.
That's interesting.
One last clarification though. On the loss, which we talked about as a two million dollar problem, is what you said, right?
Yeah, one point nine million, I think is the thirty percent number.
Out of that, how much would you attribute to non-functioning meters? Meaning not reading anything at all, not getting any data? Because the ones we're talking about now, if there was a leak, you're still billing. Person's paying for it. They're knowing that.
Yeah.
Cause you're getting data back that says you're getting more gallons. So how much is, meters not working at all?
I couldn't, I couldn't hazard a guess. I want to say seventy percent of that number is attributable to that, but I, I can't.
We have a problem list of meters that we know don't read, that they're estimated. I don't have the exact number, but it's substantial.
And is that mostly residential or, cause when the consumers, I mean, I'm assuming there's some commercial loads that use a lot more water. Like massive amounts of water compared to residential.
I, I wouldn't know the breakdown. I'd have to go back and kind of really dive into it.
The good news is when we finish the pilot and it works, we'll focus on those bills where we think there are dysfunctional meters and ERTs. And we'll go to those locations first, obviously. So that's a good for us.
Board members, given, uh, the amount of discussion and, and possible edits and other considerations, I would recommend that we ask, um, town manager to work, uh, with the GPW department to maybe provide us with a, a redlined version of this that we can take up at a future meeting.
Your next meeting's on twenty fourth.
Yep.
I don't know if that's too quick of a turnaround, but.
If the public is watching tonight and they wanted to offer feedback on this, I just think that, you know, if anybody wanted to email us in that time also, we would be willing to take comment in that way. So I'm sure this is something, if people hear about it, I think they're gonna have interest in maybe speaking again.
We haven't published this document in any way. So it will be nuanced in what we're gonna, if, if we're gonna publish tomorrow, right? It'll be the, the version that we haven't had a chance to update. So I'm just trying to play that. We, we would like to have policies in place in early July because we're about to implement, you know, this massive project. So we'll, we'll work on a timeline, but, you know, we just need to, to be careful. I don't want to put a document out there that we know is flawed from the get-go and have people waste their time before we get a better product.
Understood. Okay. So maybe that's premature. I understand.
I mean, I, I understand the need and, you know, part of my conversation with Mr. Richards, um, on this topic, you know, of, of getting some feedback as well. So, I mean, we can, we can do our best to do that once we're all ready and comfortable with, with a new document, but I think we should wait.
Okay.
You got a good list?
Yeah.
We can.
Appreciate your time.
Work with you. Uh, we can work with you offline to.
Okay.
Determine when it would be appropriate to, um, bring it forward to a meeting for a vote. But yes, Beth, I agree. If any residents are watching or in the course of our conversations, we welcome any, um, any feedback.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Remember where we are at. Agenda item number ten is to review and act on the proposed twenty twenty-five affordable housing rent increase for Edgemere Crossing. These requests occur annually and require a certified vote from the select board and approval by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. These adjustments are formula-based decisions. The formula is tied to the affordable housing definition, which is that a person at eighty percent area medium income or less does not spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs to include rent and utilities. Um, we have three of these before us this evening. Again, this first one is related to Edgemere Crossing. Board members, any, um, comments or discussions? And if not, I will entertain a motion.
I move the board approve the twenty twenty-five affordable housing rent increase for Edgemere Crossing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is to review and act on the proposed twenty twenty-five affordable housing rent increase for Madison Place.
I move the board approve the proposed affordable housing rent increase for twenty twenty-five for Madison Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, item number twelve is to review and act on the proposed twenty twenty-five affordable housing rent increase for Polar View Shrewsbury.
I move the board act to approve the twenty twenty-five proposed rent increase for affordable housing at Polar View Shrewsbury.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirteen is to review and act to appoint two members to the school building committee. By way of background, in December twenty twenty-four, the Massachusetts School Building Authority voted to authorize the town of Shrewsbury to enter the eligibility period for the proposed Shrewsbury High School project. As part of the two hundred and seventy day eligibility period, there are several activities that the town must complete to be eligible for invitation into the feasibility study phase of the grant approval process. One activity includes the establishment of a school building committee. At the May twenty twenty-five annual town meeting, town meeting members voted to approve Article thirty-two, thereby. thereby establishing a school building committee, which is made up by nine members, two of which are residents appointed by the Select Board. We advertised this opportunity and received six resident applications for this committee. Our practice is to have board members independently and confidentially vote prior to our meeting. Mr. Dobson then compiles the voting, which is shared with the chair immediately before the meeting. Um, the two candidates receiving the most votes are Megan Vincent and Robert Cox. Um, I certainly want to thank all of the residents that applied for this and reiterate that we do, um, keep a list of residents who express interest, so that we can reach out for, uh, future opportunities. So with that said, if there's no comment or discussion, I would entertain a motion to, um, appoint Megan Vincent and Robert Cox to the, um, school building committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number fourteen is to review an act to appoint one member of the Select Board as its, as its designee to the school building committee. I have spoken with each of you. Um, let's, well, I'll just say, I recommend Beth Cassavan serve as our board designee. No one was like dying to be it. I think we had a productive conversation about, um, who would, would best, uh, represent us. And so, um, Beth, if you're willing to accept that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Beth Cassavan, Cassavan as the Select Board's designee on the school building committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item number fifteen is to review an act to appoint one member to the Shrewsbury Cultural Council with a term expiring February tenth, twenty-twenty-seven. This vacancy is a result of a prior member serving two terms, which is the maximum allowed under state statute. The vacancy was advertised starting in February, and three applications were received. Again, Mr. Dobson shared a voting spreadsheet with each, with each board member, and the candidate receiving the most votes is Divya J. Araj. So if there are no, uh, comments or questions, again, I thank all of the applicants, and again, we will make sure that we, um, continue to advertise these opportunities and reach out to residents that, uh, previously expressed interests if we see that there are, um, future opportunities that we think are aligned with the interests that they expressed.
Okay, I move to appoint Divya J. Araj to the Shrewsbury Cultural Council to a term expiring February tenth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item sixteen is to review an act on the Select Board meeting schedule for July to December twenty-twenty-five. If I recall, there was one question, I don't know if it's been resolved, about Veterans Day. So, um, this follows our, I believe, our standard schedule of the second and fourth Tuesday. Unless, do we make any modifications? We sometimes do around.
Around December, we usually double up.
The second and third week, and then Tuesday, November twenty-fifth. When is Thanksgiving? Anyway, well, we can always adjust it as we get closer to there, but.
Twenty-seventh.
It'll be here before we know it.
Thursday.
Yeah. I don't know what our past practice has been.
I think we've moved it to the week before. Sometimes we have.
We don't, we normally don't have it.
We do not.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we move it the week before, then we're like up against Veterans Day?
Be November eighteenth.
Okay. So, um, we don't want to meet on November twelfth, and then again on November eighteenth, it seems. Do you think there would be a need? Do we ever just?
I mean, it's after special town meeting, potentially.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes we move both meetings. If you want to just vote it the schedule as it is, and we can adjust it. Yeah, I think that's probably best.
I think it is, too. I mean, honestly, we could accept it the way it is and, um, adjust the November dates as, if we see fit, as we get closer to November, unless anyone has a strong opinion on it this time.
I move the board vote to adopt the meeting schedule as proposed for July to December twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, we'll next move to correspondence, right? I'm not sure I'm not missing anything. Um, item number seventeen is an email dated May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five from Kevin Krasnecki, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, regarding Massachusetts Department of Transportation Capital Investment Plan Draft Fiscal twenty-six through thirty, Mass DOT Capital Investment Plan available for review and comments, so noted. Item number eighteen is an email dated May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five from Sam Rozani, Shrewsbury High School class of twenty-twenty-six, regarding follow-up to the May twenty-seventh presentation. So noted. And number nineteen is an email dated June fifth, twenty-twenty-five from Naomi Helburn, one thirty-one Stony Hill Road, regarding request to end fluoridation of Shrewsbury's water supply. So noted. Items twenty and twenty-one are ZBA decisions. Also noted, and that concludes our agenda. If there's nothing else to come before the board this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.